Regularly scheduled East Long Meadow Public Schools School Committee meeting. Call the meeting to order sixish twenty. Um, this meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts, March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. We have the whole committee in attendance this evening and we will move to our first order of business, which is approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve the April 26, 2021, um, opening session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Beth.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Discussion. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five zero. One more, please.
Move to approve the April 26, 2021 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Anthony Nella. Discussion. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero as well. We have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee at this point. If you are interested in speaking and you are in attendance on the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand now and we will call on you accordingly. Yep, please. Hi Leah. Can you take off a few?
Alright, I'm still new. Okay, here we go. Sorry, you were big and then I went to chunk, so. Hi, thank you. I have a question for you and I'm not sure if this has been discussed previously, but I did notice something. So I just wanted a question and then to go from there. I noticed you put out the tentative schedule for 2021-22 and I noticed there are only two half days, which are before vacations for both staff and students and that there are no professional development days built in. Now, I've been a little in my own world for the past couple of years, so I haven't attended as much of the school committee meetings. I'm starting to get much more involved. Is that something you do later on or is that the final schedule right now? And no, okay.
Yeah, no, you're right. You're right. Your prior point is correct. Yes, we haven't set the dates yet, but they will be set. There will be professional development days.
Okay.
That those two half days so far, yes.
And I do ask because I know that there is some beliefs on the table that professional development during the school year should be eliminated. There are some people who have this belief and that it should be moved potentially to before the school year as opposed to having half days. Is that something that will be on an agenda in a future school committee meeting? Is that something you will all be deciding before I go further? Or?
Yes, it will be on a future agenda, both points, yes.
Okay, excellent, excellent. That is pretty much what my concerns were going forward. Alright, I will look for that on the agenda. I appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you Leah for checking in tonight.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Anyone else? If you're on the Zoom meeting, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, we will move forward with the meeting. We have committee and subcommittee communications. Beth, would you like to start?
I went to, it was great. I went to the award tonight and the National Honor Society induction and it was just really lovely to be able to go to that at the school. I feel bad, parents really couldn't be there for it, but the kids are fantastic. I'm proud of them, what they've accomplished this year and the years before you and all of this, but just nice to have something normal happening, so.
Agreed.
Yep.
Anthony Nella?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Sarah?
Um, we were able to meet with the financial subcommittee for the town council oversight committee, so that was a meeting that occurred this week and I think we had some positive traction around our budget. So we'll be looking forward to some further information regarding that and I think that's about it.
Okay, Bill?
Okay, had some student of the month from the collaborative. Student of the Month awards for April. Vadim Lissistine for Information Support Services and Networking Two. Colby Law for Landscaping and Technology Horticulture One. Outstanding Vocational Student from, for the year 2021. Juanita Sar at the Twain Academy is from East Long Meadow. And Most Improved Vocational Students for the year 2021. Christopher Bowden for Advanced Manufacturing Technology. Nathaniel Bissonnet for Carpentry Two. Jacob Rice for Cosmetology Two. And Esper Inalza Gomez for Integrative Occupational Preparation. Congratulations to all those students.
Yes, thank you so much. Congratulations to all those students. Okay, and moving forward, we have recognition of teachers in excellence, teachers in excellence winners for the Grin spoon awards. Mr. Smith?
Okay, so we have tonight four individuals who are the 2021 Excellence in Teaching Award winners for the East Long Meadow Public Schools. I think if they raise their hands, we're looking for Alex Lennon, looking for Anne Lungarini, and we're looking for Abby Steiner and Brendan Abad should be in our audience. And want to introduce them and then not only congratulate them, but read some of the different statements that colleagues have made in nominating them.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for joining tonight.
So, do we have everybody on screen?
I don't think we have Mrs. Lungarini. Her hand's up.
Oh, still, sorry. I clicked your vote. Thank you.
Just by way of introduction, the Grin Spoon Excellence in Teaching Awards have been going on for now over a decade and Harold Grin Spoon, the Harold Grin Spoon Foundation is what puts it all together. But each year, they ask school districts around the Pioneer Valley to nominate four, in our case anyway, four teachers or three teachers, veteran teachers and one teacher who might be within the first three years being in the field of education who represent excellence. They go above and beyond in terms of how they lesson plan, how they engage students, how they engage colleagues and how they engage community. We think we have some pretty incredible representatives here representing the East Long Meadow Public Schools this school year. And I'll start first with Mr. Abad, who's from East Long Meadow High School and he is our health teacher. He has, I believe his second year at East Long Meadow High School and possibly in his third year or is in his third year in education. And not only is he an excellent teacher representing East Long Meadow, but let me read some of the things that his colleagues say about him. So Brendan is a second year teacher at East Long Meadow High School. As a teacher, Brendan is well respected by staff and students. He uses a variety of teaching methods that allow his students to collaborate, use technology and be creative through project-based learning. We have found him to be an excellent role model for his students. People have witnessed him each day giving students words of encouragement as they exit his room at the end of class and telling them to have a great day. He does, he goes above and beyond to make his students feel good about themselves. He is open to sharing ideas and lessons with other teachers, always enthusiastic about teaching and learning through the different professional development opportunities. In addition to teaching, Brendan is also a coach at East Long Meadow High School. He has coached boys cross country and is the head basketball coach for the boys. Brendan is a member of the ELPS Equity and Inclusion Committee and he can be seen outside of his regular coaching duties at many different East Long Meadow High School events. And so Brendan, congratulations. And he is representing East Long Meadow High School as our teacher with one to three years of experience in the field. Now, we're going to give him a round of applause. Introduce each of the other teachers and then this Thursday evening, all four teachers will be celebrated and honored at a function that is put on by the Harold Grin Spoon Foundation. Unfortunately, it still is virtual this year, but we hope soon to be back in a live banquet setting. But congratulations to Brendan. Our next winner is Alex Lennon, who's a third grade teacher at Mountain View. And let me give you an idea of how her colleagues feel about her. It's the coolest part of all of this process when you're, we go through looking at our Grin Spoon nominees is what and how colleagues have nominated our eventual winners. So this year, Alex has proven to be incredibly worthy and incredibly worthy candidate for this award. Despite all of the challenges and new endeavors that COVID-19 has generated, Alex has maintained a magically positive attitude and a level of unwavering enthusiasm. Her outlook has led her, left her students understanding that any unexpected occurrence is something they can overcome together and grow from. Alex creates a welcoming and supportive classroom community where students feel comfortable taking risks and moving beyond their comfort zone. She helps to cultivate this environment by engaging in the principles of a responsive classroom, which help foster more than just academic learning, but also growth and social emotional learning. As a result of the environment that she has created, we see her students grow in their ability to take responsibility, to cooperate with their classmates and to develop a growth mindset. Her students always feel like valued members of the classroom community and this is evident in their eagerness to participate in morning meeting activities. So Alex Lennon is another one of our Grin Spoon winners. So she also will be honored this Thursday evening at the Grin Spoon Awards Assembly. And our next up is Anne Lungarini, who is a second grade teacher at Meadowbrook. And her colleagues say about her is that Anne Lungarini is exemplary in so many ways. She connects, she listens, she thoughtfully communicates and she teaches in a way, in ways that are accessible for all learners. If you visit Mrs. Lungarini's classroom, you'll be met at the door for a customized greeting of your choice, adapted of course with COVID-friendly strategies, a wave, an elbow bump, a foot tap, et cetera. You will walk into a room of rock stars because every child in her classroom is a rock star and Anne has made them feel that way. When observing her classes, you might hear a current read aloud paired with a fun STEM activity or see our math coach invited in for a, for a co-teaching lesson. What you will see every time is that she stays on top of her game for her students so that her students will have access to the most effective, engaging ways to learn things. If you were to meet her with her class online, it is clear very early on that their teacher, Mrs. Lungarini, gave them skills and confidence to connect over new platforms and that a community was built amongst them. So Anne Lungarini, we want to congratulate her. An incredible ambassador for ELPS and we will also get to honor her again this Thursday night at the Grin Spoon Assembly, Awards Assembly. And our final winner for the 2021 Grin Spoon Excellence in Teaching Award winners is Abby Steiner. And Abby is our English Language Learner Coordinator and teacher at Meadowbrook. And her colleagues say about her that Abby has gone above and beyond this year to make sure that ELL students and families are supported and welcomed into the school community. The pandemic necessitated reaching out to families in new and novel ways and using technology. This presented unique challenges with multilingual families, all of which Abby met with enthusiasm. She is always involved in some kind of professional development or extra training and she graciously shares her knowledge with her colleagues. As the ELL coordinator, Abby keeps the ELL teachers up to date on district initiatives and programming while she also keeps her classroom or homeroom classroom colleagues at Meadowbrook supported and connected throughout an entire school year. She does an outstanding job handling both of those responsibilities. So we will also be congratulating Abby and celebrating, celebrating Abby this Thursday evening with all four of our Grin Spoon winners. So I want to say congratulations once again and we're excited to celebrate with you on Thursday evening.
So thank you so very much to all our Grin Spoon winners and we appreciate you all attending tonight. Would rather you have had an opportunity to come and visit in person, but this is the next best thing. So thank you for representing the school district and all of your hard work to get to this point. So thank you to all our winners.
So four incredible educators. We're excited to celebrate and show them off to the entire Pioneer Valley.
Excellent. Thanks so much for attending tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay. We will move forward then. We have the wrestling modifications and discussion on spectator guidelines.
So I believe Mr. McGee is in the audience.
Hey Kevin.
How you doing?
Doing well, how you doing?
Good, good. So we are off to a good start with spring sports and I'm hoping that this is the last time that I have to come to a school committee meeting this year. The end is definitely in sight, so this is our last season. And we're looking at wrestling specifically tonight and then also looking to make some adjustments to our spectator policy to open it up a little bit to more spectators. So with wrestling, it has been approved by the MIA and the EEA. Competitions have been approved and some of those modifications I'm going to go over with you right now. Just trying to share my screen.
Well, alright.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
Alright, can you see that, the screen now?
Let's begin.
Perfect. So looking at wrestling, the modifications from the MIA, face coverings are required at all times by all in attendance. Dual meets or tri-meets are the only meets that would happen with wrestling. Our schedule would include Agawam, Minichog, Holyoke, Westfield and Long Meadow. All of those schools have been approved for indoor competitions by their school committees or their school districts. The ELHS wrestling staff would prefer to do the same as those other schools and have our competitions indoors, but we do plan on doing some outdoor cardiovascular training, but we would prefer to wrestle indoors for our competitions if the school committee approved that. The MIA suggests disinfecting of the mats will occur after each MIA match, limiting the number of athletes training together to four to five wrestlers. Keep wrestlers in clusters or pods, which will allow for contact tracing and develop plans to wrestle with the same drilling partner during practice throughout the year. So those are some of the major modifications from the MIA. They have been practicing practice for the past two weeks and they are hoping that the school committee would approve them to start their contact wrestling and have those competitions against those five schools that I mentioned earlier.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to accept the modifications for wrestling for the spring season as presented by Mr. McGee.
Okay, I move to accept the modifications made to the spring wrestling for 2021 as outlined by Mr. McGee.
Motion made by Beth.
Second.
Second by Anthony Nella. Discussion. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Okay, that's one. Kevin, what else?
Yep, so the next one is in relation to our spectator policy. So a review of our current spectator policy that worked really well during the football and track season. The current policy is four adult spectators per home team participant and two visiting spectators per visiting team participant. And a review of the MIA and EAA spectator guidelines, the cap of two adults and two siblings per participant attending has been lifted. However, capacity guidelines must be followed. The expectation of six feet social distancing and wearing masks remains. And the PBIC is leaving it up to each school committee to determine what their spectator policy would be. So as far as my recommendations for this spring season, I would recommend no changes with the home team. So when we're the home team, to continue to have four total spectator passes distributed to each home participant, these passes should be used by family members or close family friends. Siblings attending the game would be required to have a pass. The home team fans would socially distance on the home side. So that would be identical to what we did during the football and the outdoor track season. The visiting team, I am suggesting that we increase from two to four spectators for the visiting team. So four total spectators will be allowed for each away team participant and the spectators should be the participants' immediate family members. The visiting team's athletic director will provide a roster of the visiting team and the visiting team fans would socially distance on the visiting side. So that is an increase from two to four. And then the major change with our spectators would be asking to allow for ELHS student fans. They are really eager to attend athletic events and what I would suggest, I did review this with Mr. Page, is 100 ELHS student fans can safely socially distance at the stadium. The student fans would be required to stay out of the bleachers. The student fan section will be outside the track fence posts closest to the lake at the stadium field. The student fans would be required to stand at each fence post. The ELHS student fans would need to sign in at the entry gate and they would need to walk behind the bleachers to find their designated area. No re-entry of student fans will be allowed and due to space restrictions, student fans would only be allowed at, at athletic events inside the stadium because there's a lot more space at the stadium events. So that's a major increase from what we did during football and track, but I do feel that we can handle it. I feel that we can monitor it. And I think the student fans are really excited to come and support the teams inside the track. And then as far as the home indoor events, so we do have two indoor competitions for boys volleyball and you had just approved wrestling. So for boys volleyball and wrestling competitions, this is a tricky one. I've gone back and forth on it and I feel that we can safely socially distance 24 people in each set of bleachers inside the large gym. So my suggestion would be to increase from two to four spectators for home team participants and keeping the visiting team participants at zero. One of the reasons for that is there's very few schools that are allowing visiting fans indoors. And since there's so few schools that are allowing visiting fans indoors, the only two schools that I'm aware of that are allowing visiting fans indoors is Long Meadow and Westfield. So since there'd be so few opportunities for our fans to go to visiting sites, I feel like increasing from two to four would be the best for our student athletes and that's why I'm suggesting zero for the visiting team. And if the school committee, if it was important to the school committee to make sure that we allowed an opportunity for visiting fans, then I would suggest two home fans and two visiting fans. I just feel like 48 is about the number that can socially distance space-wise, measuring it out inside the large gym. And there's typically usually about 12 wrestling participants or 12 volleyball participants.
Alright, sounds good Kevin. So as in the past, as you know, that I would be in favor of the, the visiting fans being able to attend only because I know now we're offering more transportation, but parents are bringing their students to the school and they were not allowing them in. Also, I think two covers most families that want to attend their own home student. So I don't know, how does the rest of the committee feel about that?
I don't know. I guess I feel like I was just at the track and there wasn't a lot of visiting parents, but they, they were there. You know what I mean? And I, I guess I do feel it was mostly groups of, I think two parents that were there for their kids, occasional student, you know, their, their younger kids coming in. So I tend to feel, you know.
Yep.
This is just for the year.
Yeah.
Right. Two and two versus four and zero? Volleyball. What do you think?
Yeah, because right, right now, everyone, every other sport has been allowed visiting fans. Yeah.
Yeah, they have.
Kevin, you'd be okay if we went two and two on the indoor?
Yes, I would support whatever the school committee wants to do. The only other schools in Western Mass that I'm aware of that are allowing indoor visiting fans are Long Meadow and Westfield. So if we wanted to allow indoor visiting fans, then I would be comfortable with two visiting fans on one side of the bleachers and then the other side of the bleachers would be two home fans. And that would be for wrestling and for volleyball.
We like to be trend centers here at East Long Meadow, so. I'd entertain a motion then to accept the recommendations of the athletic director, including outdoor events that would allow for home spectators per participant, for visitor spectators per participant and offer two home spectator per participant for indoor and two visitor spectators per participant indoor as well.
Along with 100 student fans.
And the 100 East Long Meadow home fans as described by the athletic director.
Can I just say something to that?
You certainly can. Yep. Motion has been made by Beth. Second. Second by Bill. Any discussions?
I just have a question about the student fans. How, for the other, for the other groups, the families who are both visiting at home, is either a pass system or rosters provided? How are we being notified as to what student fans are going to be in attendance? Are there a sign up sheet or are they requesting passes out of your office?
Yep. So my initial plan was if it's not a playoff game, to allow the first hundred student fans that attend. And then for playoff games, when I know that it would be a very highly attended event, I would open it up to seniors first and then I would prefer, I would like to open up the seniors first and then juniors, then sophomores, then freshmen and do a sign up in that way for, for the playoff games.
Okay.
But I feel like the hundred, I would be, you know, nothing surprises me anymore, but I think the hundred for regular season games, if we have a hundred student fans, that would be awesome. But I don't think, I could be proved wrong, but I, I think the hundred is, is the safe number. And if we get to the hundred in, in the regular season, I think we have to cut it off at that point.
And are they signing in as they line up or?
Yeah, so as they come in, they would sign in and we, we would keep the tally. There would be no re-entry. We just don't want students leaving the facility and then coming back. So no re-entry once they leave. If there was another student fan that was waiting, they could come in, but, but we would cap it at a hundred.
And what about for outside, especially for the four home visitors? If you have a student goes to the school and they're part of that family, do they have to stay with their family or can they go with the other kids?
So if it's a sibling of a player and there's probably about 10 siblings in the school that, that play lacrosse or, or participate in the stadium event, they, I would allow them to go with the student fans. They wouldn't be required to sit with their parents.
Thank you.
And Kevin, it'll either you or the school administration that monitors the field, correct?
Correct. I'll always be there and if I'm not there, there would be a site supervisor. And in addition to a site supervisor, it would be another staff member that would be monitoring the field and the student fans. So at lacrosse events, we will always have two staff members and we're also going to be hiring a police officer for the night games, just to be extra cautious for the night lacrosse games.
Excellent. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Kevin, now in all who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. All that carries five to zero. Okay, Kevin, thank you so much. Sounds good.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we have a discussion on our local health data with Director of Public Health, East Long Meadow Public Schools Nurse Leader and East Long Meadow Public Schools School Physician.
So I believe that they are in the audience and so if Ms. LaBumbarde and Ms. Petrowski and Dr. Clark can raise their hands, we'll pull them in.
Okay. Okay. Hi all, thanks for coming tonight. Amy, would you like to start us off this evening as you always uh do with some most local statistics and uh what you're seeing in the town?
Sure, uh, the town continues to move in the right direction with our uh COVID numbers. Um, so for the month of uh March, we had a hundred sixty-seven total cases. And then for the month of April, we were down to a hundred and eight total cases. One of the things that I separated specifically for the schools for the month of April is the um. The twenty to fifty demographic that we were previously tracking, I've turned into a twenty to thirty-five demographic and a thirty-six to fifty demographic. And I did that to try to tease out if uh, since that's by far the highest demographic in March. Uh, if we're looking at a lot of college students um who are returning from school. Uh, or if we were looking at a lot of the parent age demographics, because I think that will help us predict any trends that uh. Might be coming down the road for the schools. And what we found is that was, to my surprise, is it, it's mostly the parent demographic. Uh, that's driving that number. Um, so in April, we had um. Uh, twenty-five that were fifty-one and over, thirty-three that were thirty-six to fifty. And then twenty-two in the twenty to thirty-five range. And then we had a. Twenty-eight cases in the zero to nineteen rate, so twenty-eight pediatric cases. Uh, so far in May, our numbers are also looking good. We did have a a big jump in the pediatric cases. And I think that was a post-vacation jump, uh, because we're starting to see it level out a little bit now. Uh, we have so far nine pediatric cases. In the month of May, um, and just a couple other smatterings for our total of nineteen and the other age demographics.
Excellent. Kelly, can you tell us about uh the contact tracing that's going on in the school? I know it's the nurses that make a lot of the contacts with families. And also about um any transmission that we're seeing in the schools or not transmission that we're not seeing in the schools?
Yes, so since April fifth, when um most of the students came back to school. We have identified eighty-seven close contacts of uh which were students. And two close contacts that were staff. Out of those eighty-seven. Um, all have been negative so far and we're waiting for four results. So there's no in-school transmission at this point.
Excellent. Thank you. And Dr. Clark, how about what you're seeing in your practice in terms of um? Infection rates, also we talk about uh vaccinations. Uh, there's new guidelines for younger folks. Can you talk about that a little bit, please?
Um, as far as the rate of infection, it's pretty much holding, not holding steady, but dropping a little bit. Um, we've actually done very well over the past few weeks. I don't think. We've seen more than one positive case in our office, um, which is lucky for us. Um, testing is still very readily available. Um, you can get it um at multiple sites now. Um, that is the PCR test and the rapid PC, both PCR tests. There's a rapid one and there's a two-day one. Um, it's still taking about forty-eight hours to get the results back for that one. Um, we are waiting for final approval for the. Twelve to fifteen-year-olds for the Pfizer vaccine, and I think that was expected today. Um. Probably later this week. Um. But I think it should be this week sometime that they will be cleared for emergency use. Um, and I, and at least in my office, I'm seeing a lot of parents, I'm getting ready to vaccinate. Um, their twelve to fifteen-year-olds. I also have seen that um they are probably. You know, maybe even ten to fifteen percent of our older teens are vaccinated that we know of and we don't get reports of all of it, so. Um, people are really getting out there and getting vaccinated, um, which is much appreciated.
Dr. Clark, your video feed is is not on. I don't know if you can turn that on.
I can't. I'm trying to get it to work. I have no idea what's going on. It says that it's on, but I can see that it's black.
No, I I mentioned worries and all. Um, it's in terms of uh, so sixteen plus for vaccination. That's a Pfizer vaccination for sixteen plus. Do those uh students and and young young folks go the normal channels? That we all would go for vaccination uh in terms of signups?
So far, yes. Um, the, the twelve to fifteen-year-olds will probably go to. The state available sites and sign up there. Um, and they will probably have access to the pharmaceutical companies as well. Um, the CVSs um. Are giving, so I think they will um definitely be be eligible to go there as well.
Um, Amy, we talked about uh last week in our meeting, we met collectively uh the DSC guidelines. And now ask for a three-foot for um quarantining as direct contacts. Currently, we're running at six feet. What are your thoughts uh going forward now as we're not seeing transmission per se in the schools? In terms of going to a three-feet standard for quarantining direct contacts?
Uh, I think that, you know, we have a pretty good sample size after vacation of uh the positives and seeing zero transmissions. Either within that three-feet range or that six-feet range, that the mitigating strategies that we're using are working. And that if if the school committee felt like dropping down to that three-feet range, I think that would uh. The the data shows that that would still allow for a safe school environment.
So in the past, it's been you and the health um um. Your committee that has has set the standard, would you prefer that we change that standard to three feet uh as a collective vote? Or will you just go to the three feet in terms of quarantine recommendations?
I think it'd really be a uh a situation where we would probably have to set it, um, because.
We haven't done that before though.
Well, the the reason I'm saying this and and jump in, um, Amy, is that the definition of close contact. Has not changed, but what has changed in the guidance is that um DSC, um, along with their medical advisors. Have said that um three feet and in are where we need to quarantine students. Um, people that are six feet and in um up to that three-feet point. Still maybe close contacts, so we would inform, but not uh keep them, ask them to quarantine.
Okay, does that sound, that that makes sense to you?
Yeah, the reason why it's different is because it's a DSC, it's a DSC-specific uh criteria. It's not a DPH criteria. And so the the key there uh that I think is important for parents is that you're still considered a close contact, even if you're in that six-foot range. So you will be notified. You just won't be restricted from school. And there are only two places that DSC allows that uh change. And that's classroom-based education and on the bus. So any after-school events, sporting events, it's still six feet.
Now, what if um a student is within the three feet or they're within the six feet and they're considered a close contact? But for whatever reasons, um, the parents want the kids to go.
And quarantine?
In quarantine, will we allow that? Because I don't want to tell a parent their kid's going to get doctor days.
Yeah, right. So, yeah, we would, yeah, we we're going to inform, we're still going to inform anyone who's been six feet or closer. Uh, but what we've been doing now is we've also, we've informed and asked them to quarantine. Or, you know, go get a test at this specific time and then they can come back with a negative test on that eighth day.
Okay, and what about for staff? Same thing?
Uh, staff, we're still going to inform them, you know, six feet and in, and then they would have to make a decision. They're a close contact. Um, six feet and in according to DPH and um the CDC.
So based on the numbers, Dr. Clark, I'm that we quarantined eighty-seven to the back. Does it make sense in not seeing any transmission in the schools? Uh, is is that, is that the right thing to do in your opinion, Dr. Clark, to go to three-feet quarantine and then six-feet notification?
I think that's fine.
Okay. And, and then Kelly, so in terms of uh your staff, it would still be the same procedure, although now instead of six, it would be three feet. Although parents would be notified, your student was within six feet, but not within three, so you, you may want to go get a test. That would be up to you, certainly if you see symptoms and then that would be quarantine automatically anyway. Uh, anything else that would change, Kelly?
I would just enforce that we still need to, you know, wash our hands and wear our masks and. And that's why we're not seeing the in-school transmission, because we're following all that protocol. So we can't get lax now.
Yeah, right. And certainly if we see, if we do move to three feet and we do start to see in-school transmission. Uh, we can move on a dime to change that back to six feet if we saw that it was an issue. That's in terms of right now. We're not seeing any transmission in school, so um it may be the the right thing to do.
Well, I'd like it so that they can make the decision and we don't have to wait for us to meet again.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, they feel on a Monday, Tuesday, we gotta do the six-feet quarantine. I want our staff to be able to do what they can do.
Yeah.
Right. So we'll continue to inform anyone who's been six feet or closer to a positive case. But um as we've been discussing, we won't mandate a quarantine unless they've been three feet and closer.
Okay, so with that, I would, in a motion to um.
Adopt DSC's guidance. Yeah.
Yeah, change the guidance for quarantine to a three-feet um mandatory quarantine. And uh inform families of a six-foot or less uh direct contact.
Just so long as my only, was that if if our staff feels that the six feet need to get quarantined, that they can, they can do it. I don't want them to feel like.
Right.
Oh, you're talking about staff making a decision for themselves?
Not stuff. I'm talking about if um Amy and you know, the rest of our health team feel we, gee, that three feet. We had a couple cases, maybe we do want to go back quarantining kids that are six feet.
I I think, yeah, we're going to stay watching.
Give authority to revert back to the six if you saw a transition in schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That's fair.
Alright.
Yep, we're all on the same page on that.
I'm not yet. So I understand like wanting to not have to have us convene as a body, but at the same time, then I feel like it's very confusing for families. So I have two kids.
It's not gonna happen.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna happen.
It'll happen in, it it'll happen all at once, though. So if we see in-school transmission.
Yes.
Then we will go to six feet, but what Beth's saying is she doesn't want to have to wait two weeks for her school committee to do that. Okay, we can do that.
I just don't want it to have to sit around.
Even, you could even waive the forty-eight hour notice under emergency condition where we send out a Zoom link and it's a ten-minute meeting.
Well, no, I know that. I just want to make sure that we're not.
No, and I understand what you're saying. I respect what you're saying.
Alright.
Come back to us, but then it's done and then we're informed about it as well.
Because like I said, we can say enough.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, good discussion. So my motion has been made by Bill.
A second.
Second, but if that's any other discussion. Here now, all those in favor, please say aye. Okay, uh, so on the horizon, what I see is discussion on uh vaccinations, mandatory vaccinations versus non-mandatory vaccinations. Specifically when we get to the fall. Um, so just to keep that as a topic as we move forward, not for tonight necessarily, but. Uh, I think that what will be coming up next, so we'll continue to discuss that and uh that would be our next discussion, I would say. Hopefully, okay. Any other questions for our health team tonight?
Thank you, we're always. Yeah, we'll stay on top of um Kelly, Amy, Dr. Clark are on the data all the time, so we'll we'll just stay on top of that.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Okay, again, so much appreciative of all the work that you folks do. Uh, we rely heavily on your knowledge and um. You're you're helping us keep our kids safe, so we're very thankful for all your time and efforts for that.
Yeah.
Having us.
Happy to be here. Have a good night.
Alright, Amy, thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Amy.
Bye.
Good night. We are so lucky to have them.
They've been fantastic. And the nurses in our buildings have been incredible. We could, they're, they're working with families nighttime, weekends. Whenever we get the information, as soon as um Amy's office receives it, and that can be at any time of day. Um, she generally will send a text to Kelly and me and then we start the contact tracing. So often, we're well ahead of the contact tracing collaborative that helps out the state.
Excellent. Okay, we're going to move forward. So I had put an update on the ELHS learning model in case we needed to make any modifications. Based on health data or anything, but I think we're pretty much set in that regard. So unless anyone has any questions, we're going to move on to the next item.
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you. We have an update on the MSBA eligibility process.
Okay, so as um people know, that uh we're in uh the MSBA eligibility period right now. And it's a generally about two-hundred-and-seventy-day period. Ours began um in October, ends in uh late June. And during that time, a district who's been brought into that period has to complete basically eight requirements. Um, some of the bigger ones are things like providing the MSBA information and um. Basically, data on capital projects, um, the maintenance process and procedures that we use. Working on what our enrollment currently is and what our projection is out ten years, uh, looking at. Uh, as you do that enrollment projection, um, looking at things like active building permits, um, recent move-ins, all of the above. Uh, and so we have completed everything to date. Um, and we're looking at our final step, the eighth requirement, uh, which is sending the MSBA. Uh, a vote um that the town council takes and appropriates funding. We actually had town council do that at their last meeting, but tomorrow night, um, we will do it again. Because we do do need to amend one sentence. Um, MSBA is fully aware of this. Um, basically, they've received already the first vote, so they know that the money's appropriated. And um they're just awaiting the vote tomorrow night with the amended wording. And then I will have um the town clerk, as she did the last time, certify that, sign it, uh, put a raised seal on it. And I send that off to the MSBA. Once that's accomplished, um, we will break out. For them a, what they call Exhibit A, that uh eventually will be attached to a funding agreement between the MSBA. And the town of East Long Meadow for the feasibility study. Exhibit A just breaks down how you would take, say, the one-point-two-million dollars. And from a percentage standpoint, break it out in terms of design cost, um, drawings and so forth. Uh, and that's something that um will work with uh Mr. Fanny and Mr. Dunn from the Department of Public Works. But we'll probably also um see if we can connect with a couple of our owner project managers who have helped us with. MSBA projects at Meadowbrook under the Accelerated Repair Program, uh, because there's no specific uh step-by-step guidance on this. It's more of you look at projects that are of a similar size and you try to make sure that you put the best estimate together for that breakout. But the the money uh has been appropriated. Once the MSBA has that final vote, bless you, um. The uh MSBA puts it on a board of directors agenda and then they um both accept. The uh, all the different requirements being completed by East Long Meadow. And then they vote to send a funding agreement back to East Long Meadow. The last time we checked, we were looking at about fifty-six percent um of reimbursement for eligible costs. Key wording there, eligible costs, there are always, whether it's a feasibility study or even a full project. There always will be costs that are not eligible for reimbursement, but any costs that are eligible for reimbursement, we were running at fifty-six percent. Um, at the time of the agreement, we would get a new definition, but I'm assuming it's going to be somewhere in that fifty-five to say fifty-seven. Percent range. And then um we should get that hopefully by uh the end of June. And then we are off into the next step, which is actually conducting and getting that feasibility study. Um, with that said, um, I know that our members of our school building committee have been. Sitting out there sadly idly, um, because for whatever reason, in the um requirements during the eligibility. for whatever reason, in the um requirements during the eligibility, eligibility period, the building committee is one of the first two requirements, establishing a building committee. Then that committee who, all of whom have been notified, um, and we've been approved by the MSBA, sits idly as we continue the rest of the process. But what we would like to do is pull that group together, uh, provide a little bit of information and orientation around the whole MSBA process. Make sure that um they all know each other and sort of what their role is and why we've asked them to be on the, the building committee. And then once we get going into um the feasibility study, there will be things that they'll be able to meet on and act on. Um, and it'll become a little bit more active than what they're doing right now, which is wondering why we drafted them to be on a building committee. So hopefully this week, yeah, I'll, I'll send out some, uh, it is a long process. Uh, you know, it can be anywhere from, you know, eligibility period to the, the finish somewhere around seven years. So luckily we're, we're into that. So now we're, we've taken off at least one year. So we're moving. Uh, so we're in a good spot, uh, really appreciative of the town council, town manager, town finance director, you know, for helping, and town clerk, helping us organize the vote, make sure it happens. We'll be really appreciative for their amended vote tomorrow, um, and then we'll get that off and close out the eligibility period, um, which will be exciting to do.
Great. Awesome. Any questions?
No, I just think, I think the vote is just a huge testament to this being a community effort.
Oh, definitely.
Not just something that the schools are actively seeking, but that, or the school department is actively seeking, but that there's a vested interest in the community to continue to push forward with the development of a new high school or a large renovation of high school. So I think that that's a tremendous confidence vote, uh, a vote of confidence rather, to be able to move forward um with the town council and partnership for this project.
Yep.
Agreed.
Okay, okay. Running away. Excellent.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we have an update on the East Long Meadow Public Schools' summer programming.
Okay, so uh, we do have uh Dr. Welsh in the audience, um, and now actually it looks like on screen. And we have Ms. Brown as well. Dr. Welsh, our Director of Student Support Services, and Ms. Brown, our Director of Curriculum uh Instruction and Assessment. And um thankfully, as you're hearing about, um, you know, from our health advisory group, we're starting to move where we can loosen up a little bit in terms of at least being in person. We're still gonna be obviously using safety protocols, but as we move to teaching in person, we're also doing other um traditional activities such as Ms. Marjorie Boucher talked about the award ceremony um last week. Uh, and something that we weren't able to do last year was conduct our regular summer extended school year for uh special education students, which we've always done in the past. We did conduct something that was virtual, um, but we're moving back. And in order to move back to a more traditional program, uh, it's an incredible amount of work. And I just wanted um Dr. Wells to sort of outline some of the things that um not only we're doing in the planning stage, but what we hope to um have ready as we get into our summer programming.
All set?
All set.
So um, hi everyone. Nice to see you all. Um, I have been working um with our staff to put together the extended school year, which is part of the mandated IEP process. Um, it's something that we actually start on the first day of school, collecting data about um students' progress toward meeting IEP goals. And then from that, um, we look at whether or not students have um shown substantial regression or whether or not students have um demonstrated a significant need in order to recoup or regain skills uh that were lost as a result of um period of time away from school. Uh, generally, uh, in the summer, we have um special education and related services for approximately a hundred and thirty students. Uh, last year we provided that remotely. Um, we had almost the same number of students and our staff who had worked remotely all last spring, um, really stepped up last year in a variety of very creative ways to provide again both special education and related services. Um, this year with everyone being back in school, we're able to do what we have done um in other years past. And so uh I have started the process, our um special education liaisons and related services staff have um provided data and recommendations for students. Um, we've grouped students, we posted today for staff. Um, that is done through um a collaboration with um the ELEA. Um, and so I'm hoping that we will have folks who still have a little bit more, um, little bit more pep left in them to work uh dur- during the extended school year. Um, we've provided information already to um Mrs. Becker um relative to those students who might need transportation in order to access those programs. Um, and we will be providing services four days a week for six weeks um in four of our buildings, um, because Maple Shade will not be available to us this year. So there will be a little bit of movement um among students. Uh, some children might be attending programs in schools that they typically would not attend during the school year uh to accommodate the need for um not having accessibility to Maple Shade. Um, but I'm looking forward to um another, another very positive year. This year we were um we really encourage staff to refer students, um, just to kind of out of recognition for the unusual year that we had. Um, so those parameters may be um a little bit broader than they have been in the past. Um, and eventually uh we will be contacting parents, um not only to notify them of um all of the details of their student's program, but also to obtain um some sort of a commitment because um student attendance really drives um things like the amount of staff that we need, transportation, um, and that sort of thing. So it's really helpful to have information about which students will attend and which don't. Um, some don't. They have other plans for the summer, uh, which are just as valuable um as anything that we could possibly do. Um, we've also been working, um, I see Kelly's still in the audience. Kelly is um my godsend, um, in terms of making sure that we have nursing coverage. So we have a school nurse assigned to every building as well, because there will be students back in the school during the summer and uh we also will need um pair professionals and one-to-one health staff as well. Um, so we're probably maybe sixty percent into the process. Um, it, it's a pretty time-consuming process, but um, hopefully we'll have it wrapped up fairly shortly. Um, the dates of our summer program are July sixth to August twelfth. Um, and we will have services on Monday through Thursday. Um, we usually don't offer services on Friday. So that we can do things like process the payroll and things like that. That's it in a nutshell. Um, these services, I would just add, I know Mrs. Brown's going to speak, I think, about the summer academies. Which are services that might be a little bit more optional to families, although um, families of students participating in extended school year may opt not to participate, or they may perhaps choose to have their child working um with one of the school-based academies. But we're looking forward to having everybody onboard. Um, as COVID protocols change, you know, we will be um implementing anything that we would be implementing if school were in session. And um, so you know, we, we hope for a nice, safe experience for everybody as well.
Thank you. I know if people have questions.
What's the length of the day?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
What's the typical length of the day, Dr. Welsh?
Uh, depends upon the services and the students' IEP.
So what are the ranges generally? We have.
So some students uh would attend for the, for a portion of the morning for two and a half hours or for three hours. Some students who have more intensive needs and require more related services are with us um for, into the afternoon um as well. It really depends upon each individual student's program.
And then how does that work in terms of the teacher's schedule and the transportation fees, especially given like, are we're gonna have kids kind of going in and out and seeing different teachers in that regard or?
Uh, no, these will be the same, uh, similar teachers if uh the teachers uh decide to join us this summer. But um our service providers, generally our, our service providers, all our families know, uh, and they continue to work with them. The, some of the programs, like our uh ASD program, will be one of the programs that uh starts in the morning and then goes into the afternoon where other programs might stop at twelve. And that's generally how we, based on the programs, how we'll set up transportation.
And then are all students offered four days of instruction, or are there different models offered?
Uh, it depends on if this, oh, well, Dr. Welsh probably can answer that question better than I can, but I think some of it depends on program they're in and services that they're receiving.
It depends upon each student's IEP. Um, and, and obviously students with similar needs are grouped together as much as possible. Most groups have at least have a, a teacher and it, and generally a pair professional. You had asked a question about transportation. Transportation is, is offered if it's a related service um that's already in a student's um signed IEP. Um, and as far as um whether or not we offer services for all four days, uh, that's really based on the um the degree of services that a child receives during the school year.
Have you seen any kind of increase so far in the trend of students who would be participating this year versus last year? The last year, they were about a hundred and thirty.
Um, if we have an increase of students, it's because we encourage staff to re- to re- refer more students.
I think that's one, so Dr. Welsh, if it's in an IEP, how will we be referring a different number? Are the IEPs being amended to include additional students this year as opposed to in years past?
No, I think it's based on regression, the, the achievement that they've shown or lack of achievement throughout the years generally what gets them referred. My question, Dr. Welsh?
Data that if it's IEP, then wouldn't that regression not necessarily play a factor in it?
I think what Dr. Welsh is saying is in the IEP is the, the program and related services, so we know what would be set up in the summer program.
Well, and I, and I also would only say that the number of students that are in the district who have IEPs changes every year, it changes every day. The numbers of students who receive related services may change, the referrals that we get from early intervention may change, the numbers of families that opt in or opt out of services may change. Um, there are a lot of variables that determine the numbers of students who actually attend extended school year. That are not necessarily within the scope of the discussion of uh student regression and the IEP process. Prior to um knowing whether or not we would in fact be running some of the summer academies, um, we wanted to ensure that for some of our students who had participated in remote learning, um, that they would have an opportunity, um, if, um, again, it's always based on parental consent. And yes, we do amend IEP pro, IEPs in order um to document that our students participate in uh extended school year because uh we receive circuit breaker reimbursement for that, and we also don't provide services without informed parental consent. Um, so we did want to um include as many students as we could, and so even students who um perhaps had not demonstrated as the law uses the term significant regression, but this year, uh, we wanted to include students who um might benefit from having that time. Um, so uh IEP teams referred those students.
Some students don't have it written in their IEP that they have to have summer service.
Right.
Correct.
And it's just like, it's a teacher, you're sitting there like, huh, that little guy, and that's where those say go. And the parents can, don't have to do it. And it doesn't stay on their IEP for like next summer. It'd have to be.
Yeah, that was where my question was going, was if we had a hundred and thirty last year, and are we seeing significant regression this year? What are our numbers looking like based on that? That's what's not clear to me.
Oh, uh, if the question is about regression, I, I don't know that I would be prepared to talk about that. I'm really just looking at the numbers of students who have been referred. As far as the scope of any regression, um, I, I really couldn't comment on that, if that's the question.
Okay, thank you.
What's up?
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Welsh.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Uh, Ms. Brown is also with us, and um Dr. Welsh had alluded to um summer academies. And so uh, one of the things that we are looking to do, um, these are a little bit more optional. They're not tied necessarily to an IEP, but as Dr. Welsh said, um, you know, certainly if there's a family that would rather do the summer academy and that, that works out and is going to support that student, um, they may have the opportunity to do that. Uh, but basically Ms. Brown's gonna um start to outline what we're attempting to do uh this summer for students um in the elementary, middle, and high school level. We're gonna be running them uh at all three levels.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Smith. It's very exciting. Um, and good to see everyone. Um, so we will have, and we're at still in the stages of planning and hiring and kind of working out the details. Um, but right now, um, at Meadowbrook will house the elementary academy, which will be rising first graders through fifth grade. And the focus will be on literacy, math, and, and social, emotional, recreational kind of fun, right? So it, it needs to be not just the academic, but also um just giving the kids that time to, to play and interact with each other. And different teachers will organize different electives. And that will run uh three hours a day, four times a week. So again, the Monday through Thursday, starting July for six, all of these actually start July sixth uh for five weeks. Um, I'm just gonna run through these. If you want to just jump in and ask questions, that's fine too. Bertrand will be for rising a sixth to eighth grade, uh, because the rising eighth graders have another opportunity that I'll tell you about in a minute. They'll get to choose either an ELA or a math academy, and that also includes social, emotional learning. Um, and that will meet for uh three hours a day, two times a week for five weeks. So either the math for two week days or the ELA for two days. Um, the high school, I'm just gonna jump down to the bridge program, is providing an opportunity for rising eighth graders to get some academic support and also social, emotional, and just get their bearings with the high school. Um, and that's going to be really flexible. It will run um two hours a day for four, uh, four times a week for four weeks. However, families can choose to send their child one week or all four weeks. So that's gonna be very flexible. Um, and all of the um high school bridge program students will also have the opportunity to be part of the Spartan Academy, uh, which is um an hour a day. So the bridge program will run and the credit recovery will run um from nine to eleven, and then from eleven to twelve, uh, there'll be this Spartan Academy, which, which again will be a, a variety of recreational activities, um, sports-oriented, outdoors, cooking, robotics. And so they'll get to choose, and that will be very flexible as well. Um, so uh they don't have to come for every session. Um, so that will be an opportunity for all kids as well. And then the credit recovery will be for uh current ELHS students who need to make up courses in, in the summer, and they'll be using the edgenuity program for that, and that will run for two hours a day, four times a week for five weeks. So that's kind of this, the, the overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, the credit recovery that's edgenuity, is that gonna be in-person or are they gonna be at home doing that?
Um, it will be in-person because there will be someone dedicated to helping them with questions and, you know, being their cheerleader, et cetera, et cetera. There might be an option for being at home. I, I need to find that out from the high school, but um the model that they're basing this on at least will be in-person. So that they get that extra support. Um, and now uh Dr. Welsh's program is uh only for students who have IEPs and who have met certain criteria. This will be open to all students, including students who have IEPs, so we'll obviously have to make sure that they have the accommodations that they. So we'll obviously have to make sure that they have the accommodations that they need met during this period of time as well.
Is, is credit recovery being offered to grade nine through twelve?
Correct.
So if the student didn't pass the class this year, then they would take that credit recovery class over the summer?
They have the opportunity to, yes.
Right.
If I were a twelfth grader, I would definitely take that opportunity.
I'm sorry, were there regulars, um, classes too? Like teachers teaching, like, if the kids didn't pass, um, English nine or English ten?
I think because we have kids who are, um, take, you know, um, needing support in all different courses. Uh, at all different levels. Um, the focus, uh, for that one-to-one teaching is going to happen with the, um, the bridge program. Um, and then the, the course recovery will be with edgenuity. Um, and that teacher who's just going to be there to support. Um, rather than trying to find a teacher for every subject for every grade level.
Are you talking about, uh, running a sort of a traditional summer school program? So, um. We've never run, uh, a traditional summer school program where you're bringing back staff to teach like English nine. Generally what they've done in the past in, uh, the high school has looked at a, a couple of different credit recovery models. But, um, traditional summer school, if you will, if that's a term we can use. Generally, our students have either gone to Agawam, sometimes to Lubbock Summer School, um, depending on where they're offered. Um, so that, you know, our guidance counselors will look to see what districts might be offering sort of a more traditional one. And, and sometimes actually I think Agawam's the one who will offer. Uh, some hours during the day, but also at night. So it gives them an opportunity possibly if they're working during the day, then they can go take, uh, a course at night. Um, what we're trying to do with edgenuity is now broaden, uh, the different courses that we can provide. For, uh, credit recovery and this summer will be the, the first, um. Time we do that with edgenuity and, and give them that opportunity. And it sounds like what the model is, is. It's in person in that students would report at a given time. And then there would be a coordinator or facilitator, if you will, but not necessarily direct teaching by that person. That person's gonna troubleshoot and help them get online to work within their program, depending on what, what courses they're doing.
Well, it's just, I mean, we saw this year how. Learning on the computer, it wasn't for everyone.
Correct.
So that's why I just, but they have those other options.
So they have those options, right.
But those come at a cost, right?
Yeah, they do come at, they have a cost, yeah. All summer schools generally operate on a self-sustaining basis, so there's a cost to. Um, running each course, um, for instance, when I. No, 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 the in-person summer school all run at a cost.
Uh, but if the Easton Meadow student opted to go to.
Agawam, they would pay a certain.
Family would have to pay for that child to attend Agawam summer.
As would an Agawam student.
And one of the things we're facing after this incredible year is, as Dr. Welch said, uh, you know. Do, do, do our staff have the stamina left in them? So, um, we're also, you know, trying to make sure we have the staffing.
It's always, it's always challenging to get staffing for summer schools and so forth, but, uh. Hopefully we'll have a couple of weeks there where they get a break, rejuvenate and then we'll have staff to help us through these different programs.
Will the facilitator for credit recovery, will they have a content background so that they can?
Hopefully it's gonna be, yeah, it's actually gonna be one of our staff members that we're hoping, plus, plus our administrators will be here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And for the bridge program, we'll have academic teachers too. So if folks run into any kind of issue.
Right. I think, I don't know.
At the school.
Anybody's familiar with virtual high school? That was a, a program, still is a program that's run and. Uh, some high schools choose to, um, connect with that. It's, it's very similar. Except virtual high schools usually run during the school year and offers maybe classes that a high school couldn't offer for whatever reason. And in order to be part of that, high schools have to put up a, um, facilitator who's one of their staff members. Um, who connects with the students, keeps them going. Um, in many cases, that is usually a, a computer teacher or a math teacher, um, who does that. However, they have access, you know, if a student's struggling with something to, you know, all the other disciplines.
I am familiar with edgenuity.
Okay.
Sometimes the students do need support in math or English or.
To get through the program?
Yes, and the teacher also needs to check their work to move on.
Right, yeah. I think that's where, yeah.
Forward, so that's why it's important to have that.
Content base.
In there, um, if they don't know high school math. Or, so that's why it's.
So that's, so that's a good point. So that's something that, uh, we'll have to put into the criteria for hiring that position.
I know they're already thinking about that, but you're making me think maybe we should have two facilitators, one who is.
Exactly what I was thinking.
English and one in math.
Our, right, right.
You have a lot of kids in there.
You're gonna need more facilitators and break that up, absolutely.
Yes.
Yep.
So.
Thank you.
Revamping our model as we speak.
Okay, any other questions on this topic?
Just a question about the flexibility afforded to the two programs at the high school level. Are families gonna have to sign up ahead of time for that? Like, are they gonna have to select what days, what weeks they're coming? Cause I just am fearful that then if every child decides not to come on July ninth. Then we have teachers there with no students.
So for the bridge program, you have to commit to the week. So they'll have to sign up for the, you know, this week, that week, all four weeks. Um, for the Spartan, I think they're still working out the details for that because you're right. Um, you know, we obviously don't wanna have kids come, uh, have teachers come and the kids are not here. Um, but we're, um, thinking that all the bridge program kids will be involved in that because it's, you know, it's all. You know, engage, fun things to do, but they are still working out the details to make sure that they have a good system. This is our first year at all of this, so it's a learning process too, but it's also very exciting.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Okay, uh, Joanne and Heather, thank you so much for attending tonight. Appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a few minutes.
Okay.
That's true. She's on coming up in another one, yep.
Okay, good update on the summer programming.
Why won't families be notified?
Uh, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. We, we're still trying to figure out, as you saw, you know. How many people are gonna need, uh, for each program and. Once we get that solidified, then we'll be able to open it up and provide information to families.
Great. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Assistant Superintendent for Business report. We have Pam with us this evening. We have the FY twenty-one third quarter financial report.
That's right. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. Um, as, uh, Mr. Thompson just said, in your packet is the, uh, third quarter financial report. What's so funny, I'm gonna change my settings cause I'm looking at just myself. I'm not the most tech savvy, so this is a thing that I did it.
Yeah. It's all that matters.
All that matters.
That's right.
So in your packet is your third quarter report, um, you know, it's a design, uh, excuse me, it's designed as a financial update for the FY twenty-one school budget. As of the third quarter, March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. This report also includes your grants and revolving accounts. And looking at the, uh, budget spreadsheet on page five, all of the salary accounts are on the top section of the page. I always give you guys a, a, a write-up with the summary there, but I'm just gonna skip that and not go through every single line. Um, of what I've written, so I'll just go right to the spreadsheet for you. So, as I said, the, um, salaries are all in the top half of the page there. And as you go down to the right is the available, uh, budget. Available balance as of, um, again, I'm just gonna remind you, it's as of March thirty-first. Um, so you're gonna see the athletics and, you know, the bulk of that is going to be expended. We did have sports this year. Uh, department heads, again, that's going to be expended. And as you, as you find your way down those, you know, line items, you're gonna see some are, are much higher than they typically are. Such as your, um, medical staff line, um, your paraprofessionals, um, the teacher line even. Substitutes, those are areas that I'm watching and I do feel that we're going to have some, um, excess funds remaining at the end of the year. That, um, perhaps we'll go back to the Towns General Fund. Um, you know, the, the medical staff, just to kind of explain what's, what's happened. Some of these students, um, didn't come to school. So the staffing wasn't needed as, as we had planned for. Um, same thing with paraprofessionals, you know, sometimes there's these additional duties. They do when the kids are all in, in the buildings and the first half of the year, of course, they, they weren't here. So for obvious reasons, it's the same thing with the teachers, you know, we have some teachers, um, that were out on leave of absences. Some of them were non-paid. Um, that has an impact at the, and, on each budget line here and, and substitutes. Um, we were lucky enough this year to put in, uh, three, uh, building, permanent building subs is what we called. And, um, the Esser grant did, um, and is paying for that. And actually it's, um, yeah, one, one of the, one of the grants is. Is covering that, so that's had a positive impact here on this sub-line. Um, so, uh, does anyone have any questions specifically on the salaries? Okay, I'll go down to the bottom section. Those are your expense lines. Um, and again, as, as we go down, you know, you see your equipment, your copiers, contracted services. So I've got that one highlighted. I do anticipate some savings, um, perhaps in that line item as well. Um, it's kind of hard to say right now because of, um, we're, we're opposite this year from what we were last year. Um, we were in school last year and then weren't in, and then now we weren't in and we are in now. So. I, I'm kind of watching that, um, but it is an area that I think we might have some excess there that, um, I'll bring to your attention. The other area is, um, professional development. Um, we didn't have, um, you know, as, as many people going out. But there is a contractual deadline for professional development and that is April thirtieth. So after, remember this, um, quarter ended March thirty-first, so there could be expenditures that happened over the last month. So again, I'm just kind of watching, um, that area, but when you go down the bottom and you look at your totals, you're gonna see, you know, our. Budget and the expended, um, let me just remind all the folks out there, our budget is thirty-one million, five ninety-four, zero eight nine. To date, as of March thirty-first, income, uh, the expended was nineteen million, three forty-two, seven six six. The encumbered, ten million, one hundred and sixty-nine eleven, and that leaves a balance at March thirty-first of two million ninety. Dollars and two million ninety-four-ten. Did you get all that? Does anyone have any questions on the operating budget at all?
That's good.
Okay, so we'll go on to our, um, next page here, which is page six. And, um, I always group these where the federal grants are at the top here and you'll see we did have some FY twenties that were rolled over with. Um, you know, some smaller balances and all of those have been expended and I'm working on what, what I call the FR one, the final report. Um, which the auditors all like to see done on an annual basis. So, um, just know that I'm working on those. And, um, now we get to our FY twenty-one federal grants and I did wanna bring to your attention that there, um, there were some changes to the grants. Desi always does kind of an audit of, um, the, the whole state and, um. When there's extra funds to be dispersed, they, they then kind of, um, give us a notification saying that things have been added or sometimes they're even reduced. So I'll start there with the title one and I would like to say that on page two of the write-up, I did do a typo there. So I just would like to correct that for everyone. The grant had started off at three hundred and one thousand nine hundred and ninety. And we received a two hundred and eighty-six dollar reduction, so the new amount is three hundred and one, seven oh four. Same thing happened with title two A, the next line there. Um, it started at fifty-five thousand, six ninety-three. And we received a four hundred and twenty-nine dollar increase to that grant, so that new amount is fifty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, the next one that had an effect was the, um, two lines down, special ed, the IDEA grant. That started at the beginning, eight hundred and twelve, eight oh one. There was a three thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollar increase. So the new grant amount is eight hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, the last one, I believe, is the, um, special ed early childhood grant. There was, it, it is, there was a forty-eight dollar increase. Um, it started at eighteen thousand, one forty-eight and the new amount is eighteen thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars. I wanted to bring those to your attention because as you know, um, the school committee needs to, to approve and accept all grants. So I just wanted to acknowledge that there were some changes there and, and why, um, there were changes. Um, so as, as you look at all those grants, um, you know, some of them still have balances in, in there. But this was as of March thirty-first and some of these have salaries that are spread throughout the year. So these are all, I anticipate that most of these will be expended. There might be, um, some small amounts, um, that roll into next year. But we always, um, would use up all of these funds in this year or next year. Um, you will notice that the CVRF grant was our first, um, grant that COVID-related and that had, was totally expended. And then we received the Esser one grant, totally expended. We're now into Esser two. That's not listed here on the grant, on your sheet. Because it actually, you guys just approved it a couple of weeks ago. So, um, as of March thirty-first, we didn't even have the grant yet. Um, now we go into, does anyone have any questions on the federal grants at all?
Pam, are we okay to let those go without approving the changes that you stated?
I think be, it probably would be best if you did vote them at the end because it is a revised amount.
So can I just, uh, entertain a motion to approve the amended amounts, uh, laid out by the Assistant Superintendent for Business? You can do some.
Awesome.
So moved by that. Second by Sarah, the discussion. All of his favorite, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi, who's supposed to, most carries five zero, thank you.
Perfect, thank you very much. So then we go on to our state grants there. We have, uh, the Metco grant, uh, which you'll see is expended. Uh, the comprehensive school health grant, that's a DPH grant that Kelly oversees and she's working on expending that as well. As you can imagine, a lot of that is now COVID-related expenditures, um, for her nurses, et cetera. Um, then we had the coronavirus, this is a state grant, the coronavirus prevention fund. And the reason I wanted to bring this grant up is, um, about a month ago, I think I had a conversation with you where the grant had just come in. And I had said that we were going to use those funds for technology, but then after that meeting, I. Whenever there's a federal grant and any salaries are in the federal grant, we have to set aside nine percent of whatever those salary amounts are. Um, for retirement purposes. However, on a state fund, state grant, we don't have to do that. So it was much smarter for me to switch the technology to an Esser grant. And put the permanent building subs for the remainder of this year onto this grant. So that's exactly what I did. Um, I just wanted to share that with you because I did state that on, you know, um, in one of our meetings, um, and that had changed. So, uh, the last ones here are private grants. Um, we've had the project lead the way for a few years now. They're working on expending those funds down. Uh, we received that new Nellie May Education Foundation. That was, uh, for, um, I think. Was it webinars or some kind of consultation? Um, but that has totally been expended down as well. Our new one here is this one eight foundation open site ed. That's a two-year grant. This year's amount, um, we did just receive, so that's being worked on, um, to expend down as well. Does anyone have any questions on any of the grants before I move on to revolving? Okay, so our revolving accounts, um, the first one is the athletic revolving. Um, which, which has a, a pretty good balance. Um, typically we try to roll over if possible, like about thirty thousand dollars that. That is behind the scenes. That's part of the next year's budget, counting on that rollover. So this is an area I'm always looking at and working with Mr. McGee on. The next line is your athletic stadium rental. Um, currently there's a balance in there about thirty-seven thousand. I wanted to bring to your attention and just remind everyone that twenty-eight thousand dollars of that, um, balance has been earmarked. For resurfacing the track as a project, uh, with community preservation, um, fund. Um, that is doing that project and we are allocating that towards that. Um, let's see, what else did I wanna bring? The student mobile technology insurance. Um, I just wanted to explain, we do have a, a healthy balance in there, forty-nine thousand dollars. And the reason for that is because it's really top-heavy right now because over the last year. All the parents, um, you know, bought the insurance and luckily, of course, the, the computers hopefully are, are lasting right now. But so it hasn't been a ton of repairs. I did have a conversation with Mr. Quimby before, um. Coming here today because I wanted to, to ask him his opinion on, on the fee structure. Because when we set that up, we always talked about that we're gonna reevaluate that and make sure that it's still appropriate. And in his opinion, it is still appropriate because he feels that these devices, you know, are gradually going to have more and more repairs needed. Um, and just to remind everyone, the. the structure is one year is thirty dollars, two years fifty dollars, three years seventy-five dollars, and four years is a hundred dollars. So as you can imagine, you know, a lot of parents, of course, wanted to get that insurance. So we've got this nice balance there to be able to repair everything, and it's really been a very successful program. So I just wanted to mention that to you guys. Let's see, which other one? Transportation revolving. You'll see there's nothing in there because of of COVID and not being able to transfer or transport students or to be able to charge those that were under the two miles. So school lunch, same thing, where there's only fifty-three thousand dollars in there. Where typically, if you think back to, you know, a year or two ago, it wasn't uncommon for Lori to have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. So COVID has certainly had a a large impact on food service. We're very fortunate to have the grants that we do to be able to help food service. We do, of course, everyone knows that food service right now, the school lunch is free. We're anticipating that is going to be free for next year as well. There's already talk out about that. But I think that the state of Massachusetts has to like officially vote it. And having conversations with Mrs. Paul, she definitely feels that we're going to be free next year. We do get, food service gets three dollars and sixty-three cents. I believe that's the reimbursement rate for a free meal. It does not caught, it does not cover the cost by the, with all of the packaging that she has to do now. So we've been, like I said, partnering with her, and she's, you know, extremely appreciative of the district's support and very grateful for those grants as well. A school choice, that's a new one for us, right? So this is first year that we've had school choice. I just want to remind everybody, we had fifteen slots that you voted on last year. So the amount of revenue that's going to come in there is approximately, not approximately, it is eighty-nine thousand dollars that will be coming in there. It comes in with a chapter seventy on a monthly basis, so you'll see it trickle in, you know, month by month. And just to remind everybody, school committee did vote for ten additional slots for next year in case anyone's out there listening and interested, and I believe the cutoff date for those applications is May seventeenth. So, you know, what do I want to tell everybody? We're very lucky to have all of these grants and revolving accounts. They help fund the district. We would be asking the town for a lot more money if we did not get these funds. I would like to remind everyone that this is March 31st report, so a month has gone by, and I'm very sorry I didn't get this to you sooner. I will be monitoring the accounts. And and I just would like to say it's imperative to remember that the balances provided are a snapshot in time and are always changing constantly.
I had a just a quick question with the services, because I know that they've always been self-funding. And I know that these grants I'll have to use for very specific things. And if lunches are free again next year, they probably won't have the packaging that was involved this year, but it's still gonna, it's quite the deficit for this, the lunch account. Can we take any of these grants and and beef up the school account? Because, you know, I know the truck's relatively new, but, you know, or it's the equipment goes so that we can get it back to where it was at, say, the beginning of last year.
So the way that grants work is you can't just put money in there and loss of revenue and and put money into a revolving account. But what you can do is get, you know, creative with with the way that we do this by helping her with these expenditures so that gradually the the reimbursement that she does come, that does come in, will gradually build up. Does that make sense? So it's kind of behind the scenes, Beth, is is the way this this works.
Okay, all right. Yeah, no, they've always been so.
Yeah, it's it's been, this COVID has had a huge impact, loss of revenue for athletics of about seventy-five thousand dollars. Preschool tuition, about thirty thousand dollars. School lunch, I I'm not even exactly sure how much that is, but you can, it's a big number, right? Transportation, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. All of these things, we still have to think about, and it's had its impact last year, this year, next year.
All right, thank you.
So Pam, potentially, there'll be a need for some action either by the Finance Subcommittee or the full school committee for those athletic, transportation, school lunch accounts potentially exist.
Could you rephrase that? I'm not hearing you so great.
Just, we may have to make whole some of those accounts based on the circumstances of this year, either through action of the school committee or the Finance Subcommittee. Is that correct?
Well, we we can't let an account roll over in a deficit. So yes, the operational budget would have that impact. Also with Lori Paul, with food service, I do know there's about thirty-two hundred dollars that seniors out there owe, and if they, if the the district would have to cover that deficit as well if if those are not paid up. So I know she's been trying to, well, it was very difficult, right? Because usually she's seeing the kids every day and gentle little reminders, and so they they weren't in school. So she's just started to do that this last month, and and I'll work with her and try to dwindle that that down. But yes, you are right. If there was ever any deficit, we need to rectify that. It can't roll over into next year as a deficit.
Okay, great. Any other questions on that? It's not, I'm in motion to accept the quarterly update. Also accept, accept the quarterly update presented this evening. Motion made by Bill. Second my internal discussion. All the favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi, who's supposed to make, that carries five zero. Okay, Pam, thank you on that.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
She's leaving us.
I'm not, she'll still be with us. Well, maybe not. Yeah, bring her back in.
I don't think she wants to. Heather, can you give us an update on the FY202 budget development? Go.
Do my best.
Okay. It's all good, right? Everything's fine. Fully funded, we're all set.
She gone?
Yeah, she left.
She did?
Oh, there she is.
There it is.
You're muted, Pam.
You're muted.
And all I said was, I told you I wasn't tech savvy.
I did that.
Oh, my gosh.
All right. You want to start us off?
Sure. So this past week, we met with the Town Financial Oversight Committee. And obviously, also in that meeting, it was Town Manager and Town Finance Director. And we reviewed not only our our budget development that we presented and our budget request that we presented with Town Manager and then it's been presented back to the Town Council. But probably more importantly, we reviewed some of the things that Mrs. Blair was just explaining. We we started to talk about, you know, the CVRF grant and then Esser One, the federal grant, and Esser Two, which were, we accepted a few weeks ago, but actually, we're almost to finishing spending that, at least what we're going to spend this year and what's projected to spend next year. And it was important that we had that discussion because there there's a significant amount of money coming in through these grants. But what I I think sometimes eludes people, if you're not having these direct conversations, is what we're using these for. And basically, it's money that's coming in to help schools deal with that, what changes and challenges COVID has caused. And so in some cases, it's looking at making sure that as we started the school year, we had the technology available to be used by all of our students. And actually, that became somewhat of a challenge because even though we had ordered a lot of the technology, it was on back order as we started the school year, if you remember. We've received all of that now. But as we went through the year and we went from predominantly remote to hybrid, we also made sure that every one of our classrooms could handle both in-person learning and live streaming with people at home. And so that meant not only making sure that they had their regular teacher laptop, but also we added an additional monitor, an additional camera and microphones so that they could start to manipulate how they're showing different things in the classroom to the students at home and how students in class are not only working with students at home, but also what they're seeing as well. Additional to that, as we came back in full in-person in April, we started to make sure that we had outdoor spaces that we can use. And so things such as tents going up at four of our five schools and renting that over time, it seems like, okay, that, you know, what kind of cost would that be? Well, if you're going to rent them for the entire spring and then also bring that into the fall, it's up around a hundred thousand dollars. So there are, there are a lot of things that we're doing to make sure that we put our staff and students in the best possible learning environment that adds up pretty quickly in terms of cost, whether it be technology or other items mentioned. The summer academies that we just outlined a few moments ago, that's a cost that we've never in previous years had. We think it's going to be a very worthwhile program, but without these grants, it wouldn't be something that we could run. And so I think that conversation and that discussion went very well with the larger group. And so they're understanding sort of, okay, how are these grants being used? Now, as you saw in the quarterly budget report, we do know that spending was different this year because the beginning of the year, we had about a hundred to a hundred and sixty-two students and a smaller amount of staff in the buildings. So we were spending differently as we were predominantly remote. And Mrs. Blair highlighted some of those things. So we'll be watching those accounts. And so there might be operational budget that is turned back to the town at the end of the the fiscal year. But we want to make sure that we're working through all of that and to the point I think Mr. Thompson was making. You know, there's going to be some deficits in revolving accounts, so we need to think about, you know, are we putting a certain amount of this negative balance back on the operating budget? Because in the end, at the end of the year, we have to make sure that we don't have any negative accounts. And so there's going to be a lot of management as we go through the final few months of this school year. But in the end, I think that the the Town Financial Oversight Committee understood what we were trying to accomplish, both with our budget this year and the grants, but also the budget request and and where we were going next year and thinking of what our our needs will be. One of the biggest things that we talked about as well in terms of just programming and support was the fact that we know, in addition to academics, as people have heard, if they've looked at our SMART goals the last few years, we're trying to make sure that we're balancing both the social-emotional education along with the academic education. And we know this year, student social, emotional, and mental health has been challenged considerably. And so those are things that we need to prepare for as we bring students back, not only the spring, but also in the fall. And so that may mean more more contracted service counseling staff and support in addition to the counselors that we have already.
Right. Plus, so we talked about our FTEs going into maintaining a level of services budget, meaning level FTEs. In discussion, however, in the importance of social, emotional, and adjustment counselor-wise, we were thinking that it might be prudent to use some of our Esser grant money to fund two potential positions for adjustment counselors at our sister elementary schools for two years, because we can use Esser for two consecutive years, and then to roll that into the budget versus contracted services, which may be in high demand coming out of COVID. So and hopefully, we can still find adjustment counselors who are available for those positions. So we did address that with the Finance Oversight Committee and Town Manager. And they understood that concept as still being a level services, but also those positions, and then we would advertise those as full-time permanent positions. So as I said, we'd have to roll those in, so whether it be through attrition or additional funding in year three. So that that was the latest thought in terms of addressing the needs of our students as we come out of COVID. So just wanted to make sure everybody was on board with that that strategy.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, we've got to react to this. Yeah, we can't let, I mean, I agree, you're going to be chasing, we could be chasing it because of, you know, what's out there. So our thought was to get out quickly with those things for those positions and and get folks in place as soon as we could. Yeah, I agree with that. Because the quicker we jump, the better, better the rules.
Yeah, totally. And we know that Esser, Esser Two and Esser Three can be used over a few school years. And so the idea is to gradually, as Mr. Thompson said, work that into the operational budget, but not have it impact the operational budget next year.
And that was part of our discussion, was the availability of the grant money. So in terms of the town using part of that, we do have the potential for some return this year out of our operating budget based on savings that we accomplished by not being in person the whole year. Also, we were able to use some of the grants to pay for things. And so that might have freed up some money otherwise. So in instead of taking a chunk of the grants and and transfer them, then it would just be more of a return of funds at the end of the year, especially as Mr. Smith said there, we can apply those grants for up to two years. So we don't know, and Sarah alluded to this. We don't know what next year looks like or the year after. So those grants are going to become key in terms of addressing the needs of our students as they come back more in person. So so we will continue to use those. Pam, did you have something else?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say to the folks out there listening that, you know, I thought that our our meeting with the Finance Oversight Committee went really, really well. They asked some some great questions. They seemed to really understand what what's happening in the schools and receptive to our needs. So I I just wanted to add that. And the other thing that I think is important for folks to understand is that we get our revenue from two sources, from the chapter, well, for our operating budget, from Chapter Seventy Funds, which comes from the state, and then from, the the rest is from the the Town Council, from from the town, the the tax dollars, right? So Chapter Seventy formula has changed over the years. And so what's happening now to East Long Meadow is that our our Chapter Seventy has not gone up. It it only went up seventy-three thousand dollars. So as our budget goes up, that, it just means that the town has to pay a little bit more, but it's because the Chapter Seventy has not gone up. Whereas it was two or three years ago, it was, it had gone up like eight hundred thousand dollars. So our whole request was just about covered by the increase in Chapter Seventy. Did I get that detail right, Mr. Gordon, Mr. Mr. Gordon, Mr. Smith? Was it like two or three years ago that it had gone up like eight hundred thousand?
Two years ago.
No.
It was a over eight hundred thousand. And then last year, we saw it basically level off completely, and actually, in the end, they rolled back to the previous year.
There was no increase.
Right. And this year, it was about seventy-three thousand, which I think comes out to about thirty dollars per student.
That's the only increase.
They're looking to move, say, the Student Opportunity Act into implementation. I think that's where that's happening. They have to increase us by about thirty dollars per head or per student, and that's what we got.
Well, that was the formula that came out of the Student Opportunity Act, was raising the cap on Chapter Seventy from twenty-five to thirty dollars. So that's where, because we're not, we don't really qualify for a big part of the Student Opportunity Act
Correct.
based on our demographics.
Right.
I mean, that part will always be there, but I think that's about it.
I think it's been prudent how Gordon and Pam and the rest of the committee have really thought about using the funds because if we have time to think about how they are expended, then it gives us the opportunity to really consider what are the needs our students continue to bring to us, because this is not something that's going to go away just because next year might look a little bit more typical than last year. But it's also allowed us to think about things. I know this was part of the discussion on on Thursday was being able to think about upgrades to Wi-Fi and and, you know, real investment in into the into the work of of maintaining the structures we had to maintain, given what COVID put on our lap. So we don't know what the next COVID might be, but we can think about ways to be proactive and, you know, make substantial improvements that if we do find ourselves in a similar situation and we don't find the money there to support us in the way the money is there now, that we thought long-term about how we can sustain educational opportunities for kids.
Okay, a lot of work ahead of us with the budget and such, but thank you, Pam, for the update and. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, Pam.
Yeah, last one. How about the the Opportunity Act, Pam?
I I think Ms. Brown's going to come back and join us, yeah, but but it is a grant, so I didn't want Mrs. Blair to leave us.
Right.
Um, thank you. So Desi put out a grant for folks with the Student Opportunity Act plans that met one of their four priority means, areas of need. uh areas of need. Um, so if your if your plan included one of these, then you could apply for funds for that priority area. So for example, if we said it was early literacy, we couldn't apply for workforce diversity. So at the time, we had just gotten out of the equity audit, and that was one of our main uh goals was um workplace diversity for a number of reasons. There's all kinds of research that shows that, you know, BIPOC kiddos do much better when they have, first of all, uh teachers who have been trained in culture responsive teaching, but specifically if they have teachers who look like them. Um, and so we applied for the grant and we've got twenty-four thousand and some change, twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty dollars that we need to use within the months of July and August, but we can do it, um, to uh kind of meet some of those goals that we laid out in the equity audit around um creating job descriptions, utilizing external partners, changing the way we uh eliminate selection and interview bias, a lot of the things that we're already doing, but to help us really systematize that. And so we'll be working with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity again, just because they know us and they've done this work. Um, so hopefully we'll have some some good tools um out of the two months um of the summer.
Any questions, concerns, questions?
So this helps us toward, um, you know, we were just talking about that thirty dollars per um student that our chapter seventy increase was, well, to actually enact our Student Opportunity Act plan that we actually submitted to Desi. I want to say, Ms. Brown, February of last year, right before we closed operations. Um, I think it was due at the, in February.
Yes.
So we had a budget of um well over the seventy-three thousand dollars that um we received in chapter seventy this year. So this grant is is very helpful to allow us to continue that work. Uh, otherwise, we'd be figuring out how we budget differently for next year.
Yes, and as Mrs. Blair said, you know, these grants are often just for very specific things. But this will take um funds, we'll put funds back in that we might have um used down the road for um meeting this goal.
Right.
Okay. Sounds good.
Oh, Greg, I do need you to officially uh accept that grant.
Okay, of the twenty-four, two forty?
Yes, twenty-four, two forty. Is that correct, Heather?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act's evidence-based grant in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty dollars as presented.
I move to accept the Student Opportunity
Opportunity Act.
Act, evidence-based uh program grant for twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty dollars as presented.
Motion made by Beth. Second by Antonella, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That carries five zero. Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have discussion about an eighth grade Washington DC trip on Thursday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two through Saturday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
So this is a uh
Yeah.
A step back into what we hope will be um a little bit more of a regular school year. Uh, so not last spring, but two springs ago, we did run this trip at our middle school and it was very successful. Excuse me. Uh, so you do try to plan these well in advance and also there's some incentive from a uh cost standpoint to run these well in advance. Um, if this is something that the school committee can provide um preliminary approval to um families that sign up uh within the next month or so, uh would receive a fifty dollar discount. Um, so the outline is very similar to the trip that they took two years ago where they head to DC from that Thursday through Saturday. Um, and they're touring the different sites in in Washington DC. Um, they're going to be working with the World Strides Program, which has done this, uh not only did it for us uh two years ago, but has done it um for a lot of area schools in setting this type of trip up. And um, you know, we'll obviously have chaperones uh similar to what we had in years past. Uh, and we'll be signing those up as we get going with the planning.
And there'll be more details to come as we get closer.
Yep, yes.
What about like um refund policies?
So actually, one of the uh great things about this um group was that they were one of the vendors that um set up better, more vigorous refunds. Um, you know, because we had families that put in money last year. Um, and then they eventually did uh refund money. I think the only thing they held was um like the initial deposit of like fifty bucks.
Okay, and then I guess this is a year over a year out. What would the situation be if it's not, I mean, we were in a different place last year in terms of where the restrictions are coming from and
Right.
Travel, that was more being driven by the state level. So in a year from now, if it's a family's decision to say, hey, I'm not necessarily comfortable, I thought I was. I guess, like, will families have access to all of those types of policies before being able to sign up so that they're aware of just, it's a, it's a large chunk of?
It is. Um, I think initially it's a deposit
Okay.
that they sign up with, and then there's a payment over time. So as they continue to plan, they'll get more and more information and they can decide whether they want to continue to pay and keep their child involved.
Okay. And then I guess my last question would be then, this is based on a four-person occupancy per room. So that shifts based on COVID regulations.
Yeah, if that were to shift, then they would have to, yeah, they'd have to rethink, um, what do those costs look like and what does this trip look like? Um, and if, at that point, it may be something that, you know, they may have to rethink whether they do it at all.
Right, and number of buses, I would imagine, if there's social distancing, like I just.
Yeah. So that this is the hope. It it definitely is a hope to, you know, that we're going to continue to move forward, we're going to continue to see things open up. And then at the end of next school year, we would be able to take a trip like this.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the eighth grade Washington DC trip on Thursday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two to Saturday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-two preliminarily with more details to come. So I'll move. Motion made by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Beth, discussion.
Yeah, I have one more question. And then I guess I just am thinking, like, with those details, like, I'm sure there will have to be some parameters around possibly kids needing tests to come back to school if they're coming back on a Saturday and school is Monday.
Yeah, if, um, so we would have to work with, well, we'd have to look at what Massachusetts uh regulations or advisory, I guess, now it's a travel advisory uh as well as work with, as we did this evening, you know, work with our local health department and just make sure, okay, what are we comfortable with? That's how we've set um with each vacation, the, you know, what we're expecting as people return.
Right, just this is us saying it's okay.
Yeah, this is, this is not a vacation, it's us on the trip with them.
Right, we contend it for those types of of questions.
Good.
Right.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That carries five zero.
Thank you.
And the last thing, transfer of data information and specialist position from the school department to the IT department.
So this is um something that we've been looking at and working on really the last two years. Um, originally, this was a position that uh did not have a ton of interaction um early on when we brought this or created this position probably back. I think the first year was two thousand twelve. Um, and as this position has evolved and our student information and reporting system has evolved with what we provide to Desi, um, and now that we're fully in a SIMS program where uh we're pretty much consistently on a daily basis sending information from our student information system to Desi. Um, and basically what you get back if you're looking at it um every day is errors where things aren't matching up. And that's one of the responsibilities of this infant, this individual uh in the position is to is to help make sure that our database is um pristine and that our connection to Desi is uh in reporting is um current and accurate. Uh, there are a lot of other things that we do in terms of providing certain information to the schools, especially as we start the school year and students are transitioning. We try to provide um information around students moving up to um, say, a new school, whether it be the three through five elementary schools, Maple Shade and Mountain View, or the middle school or the high school. Um, and over time, what we're finding is that this this position and the responsibilities of this position are very integrated with what um our IT department does. And the town IT department basically uh handles all of our information technology needs, um with the exception of this piece. And given over time how this has become so interconnected, it makes sense now where we have a a individual contract in its last year to transfer this over and make this fully part of the IT department. The focus would still be on uh maintaining our student information system and our reporting. But now the individual in this position would be on a daily basis with a team that could help troubleshoot different things that may happen on any given day. Um, because now it involves servers, it involves um our network in many cases um as well as being able to connect with our um student information provider, which is Reddit or software. So um the recommendation is that um hopefully all of you will approve um the transfer of this position, which will be very similar to what we did um as a school department in two thousand ten when we transferred services over to the information, town information and technology department back then. And then two technicians also were transferred over. The, what we've done is we've worked with uh Mr. Quimby, the IT director, and um he has then presented to the town manager, Mary McNally. Um, and she has approved this uh with the approval tonight, this becoming a town position, which would be an individual contract or at-will contract.
Right, so you mentioned the individual contract, it's not a union position.
Correct.
And also the staff member whom, for, for whom this would affect is aware of this and
She is aware.
Not in disagreement with it per se, not that it's
She she understands it's a um, it's an individual contract and we've worked to give um uh hopefully a smooth transition. So the reason that it's not placed in one of the unions is given that it's an individual contract here and salary structure has been based more on our salary structure than it has been on the town side. Uh, and so in fairness with that transition, they've kept it as an individual contract.
Right.
Moving forward, if the individual in this position was to say go elsewhere or or find themselves no longer wanting to do this, who, how then do we ensure that the position is written in such a way that meets the needs of the schools and that it isn't shifted to meet the needs of totally the IT department?
So the um approved job description basically was what originally was approved by the school committee
Okay.
with um a little bit more coordination with the IT staff.
And that job description will hold when it necessary, that job description will hold into the future when it necessarily be able to be amended to meet like a different need at that time.
Correct, right. It'd be very similar to um how they support us with um, you know, our one-to-one initiative um or any other situation where we're moving forward with some type of new technology and and we need to basically plan it with them, and that's what we're doing here.
Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion that would include both the position and the salary item, the salary line item transfer, please. Antonella, go. No pressure.
With the salary?
We just, we, you would move, you would transfer the position and the salary line item for that position to the IT department.
Do I just have to say that?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. I made a motion to approve um the data information specialist position to transfer from the school department to the IT department.
Including the salary line item.
Including the salary line item.
Perfect, thank you. Motion made by Antonella.
I'll second.
Second by Beth, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
We have nothing further this evening. It has been very productive and it is time to go home, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. So I will, motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Sarah, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That motion carries five to zero. We are adjourned and have a good night.